Okay, good evening, everybody. It is November 22, 2021. We, this is our Town of Rhinebeck regular town board meeting. Would everybody please join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic, which it stands one nation. Thank you very much. I guess we will go right into our resolutions. Before I do that, I'd like to notice a special town board meeting for tomorrow, Tuesday, November 23 at 4:30 PM. It will be my intention to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss the personnel history of a particular person and any other business that is necessary. Are all of you gentlemen available tomorrow at 4:30 PM? We must have everybody able to attend in order to. Ed?
Yes.
Unanimously, everybody is able to attend. We can, we can, we don't, we can waive the 48-hour meeting notice. And again, it is my intention to ask for an executive session for this meeting. Okay, thank you. Joni, you have, you got that? Okay. I need a motion for resolution 2021 to 31 Shelter Contract with the Columbia Green Humane Society.
Make that motion.
Thank you, Ed. May I have a second? Thank you, Chauncey. Is there any discussion, any questions? All in favor? By any against? It passes unanimously. Thank you. I need a motion for resolution 2021 to 32 for a contract with the county sheriff's services.
Motion.
Thank you, Josh. May I have a second?
Okay.
Thank you, Ed. Is there any discussion or any questions?
Well, this is standard. They're just upping the rates a little bit, basically, right?
Yes. Any further discussion or any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion for resolution 2021 to 33 to amend the cemetery schedule to exclude Sunday burials?
Make a motion.
Thank you, Ed. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Josh.
Supervisor, am I allowed to comment?
He was just getting it to the floor. Of course you are.
Good evening, town board. I appreciate the few moments you give me to express my feelings about this motion that you're going to vote on. Since moving to Dutchess County in 2005, this is actually the first time that I'm commenting in a Town of Rhinebeck hearing. So it just shows you how important this specific issue is. I understand that the town is trying to save costs in the management of the cemetery and therefore they're considering voting to not allow burial on Sunday. The problem is that according to Jewish law, one does everything they can in order to make sure burial takes place at the earliest convenience. Since we do not bury on Saturday, if someone passes away on Friday or on Saturday, they, and they therefore cannot use the town cemetery on Sunday, we're waiting more than 70, can be as much as 72 hours until someone is actually buried, which goes against tenements of Judaism. And therefore, I'm asking the town board to vote no on the resolution. There, if, I'm sure there are other solutions or suggestions that can be made in order to help the town cover some of the costs, even if it is that any sem, any funerals that want to take place and over time have a certain extra fee. I'm sure though the families would understand, but to not be allowed to bury their loved one as soon as possible according to tenements of Judaism is, in my opinion, not acceptable. Therefore, I request that you vote no on the resolution. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming.
And I would, you a happy Thanksgiving and happy holidays.
Your family as well. Any other comments or questions? Any discussion from the town board?
I would like to know why we can't, if you need to close one day on the weekend, why not close on Saturday?
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, this is Joe Gell. Every Jewish funeral that I've been to is on a Sunday. And even if it's not an Orthodox funeral, people can come on Sunday, so it gets held over to a Sunday. And people can like to attend the funeral and not miss work. So I think it's really very important that you come up with a different solution.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions?
Have, have we touched upon all of the reasons for wanting to do this?
We are a non-sectarian, non-religious municipal burial ground.
But I, I think it is sectarian to do it on Sunday rather than Saturday.
We, everyone in our town has a Saturday to Friday work week. So this would be a different labor practice than every other resident. Gina, did you want to add anything? Gina is here representing the cemetery committee. This is on the, this is, this resolution was brought forth by our cemetery administrator Suzanne Kelly and by the cemetery committee. And this is their recommendation. I don't, Gina, go ahead.
I have nothing to add except that, that is our recommendation. We don't think it's fair. We're trying to set new policy in place for the next person after Gary's retirement that they're not on call seven days a week. I don't think it's fair to have any employee on call seven days a week. We, for the last year, have not had a burial on Sunday.
Wait, for more than the last year?
Couple of years.
Seven years. Nor have we had a burial within 24 hours of death.
Well, we have had recently two burials within 24 hours of death and, but they have not been on a Sunday. And so I just think that we need to keep in line with the, and the cemetery committee. I'm speaking for the cemetery committee, not my own personal self. But we feel like we need to be in law, in alignment with the town employees.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions?
If I could say, say one other thing.
No, hold on, Joe, please. Chauncey, did you have something?
Josh wanted to speak, I think.
Thank you.
I was just thinking, isn't there special, special dispensation for instances where for, when they come up, which they haven't come up in the last two or three years, that we can accommodate with proper notice?
Again, we're a non-religious, non-sectarian burial ground, municipal burial ground. Where there's, we're a government, there's separation of church and state here.
I don't agree with your assessment. I think it is, you're basically going with the Christian Sabbath rather than the Jewish Sabbath.
Okay. We're actually following labor, you know, why, why do we give people Saturday and Sunday off and not Sunday and Monday or other days? This is a labor also protocol.
Right. So why not close on Saturday and Sunday?
Five-day week.
I don't think that's the recommendation, but if you want to look into that with the cemetery committee, that's, that's great. I, I.
Okay, so I, I move that we modify this to change the date to Saturday rather than Sunday.
Does anybody second that?
I don't second it, but I'm going to add a motion that we put this over for, to our next meeting. There's no need to rush through this on 10 minutes of thought and a few comments.
Second.
Okay, this will be tabled then. Thank you. Thank you for coming, Gina. You could stick around. I would encourage all the town board members to speak with the cemetery committee and Suzanne Kelly. And if you want to put forward another, another proposal to close two days a week.
Could I just say this? We have way more burials on Saturday than we have ever had on Sundays.
So we're going to be losing those. So what you're saying, we'll be losing all that.
Losing a day when people don't work when they can come. Maybe, maybe that's.
What happens is now Orthodox Jews won't buy plots in our cemetery because they've been discriminated against.
Ellen, I, I disagree with discrimination. This is separation of church and state.
No, it isn't.
If, if I may say something, Elizabeth, you know, the argument that there's very few burials, then there's no reason to put this into effect. And it is. You know, Jews have bought plots there. So now you're changing it, the rules. Are you going to give money back to people who have purchased plots?
Well, I think the purchase price of the plot is for the plot, not for the burial.
The assumption has been that they could get buried.
We have, we have tabled this. We are moving on. I encourage the board to work with the cemetery committee to come up with another proposal. I have nothing in this race. I am merely listening to the recommendation of our administrator and the cemetery committee. Do, do whatever you, you know, put as much effort into this as you like. Any reasonable, no one wants to hurt anybody. Any reasonable proposition will be followed. We need someone who has a five-day work week. And that's what, that's what our employees are looking for. To me, this is a labor issue. I believe in supporting labor. I believe people are entitled to two days in a row off without being on call. So we, this is tabled. Next resolution, I'd like a motion for resolution 2021 to 34 to hire a temporary highway department laborer.
Make a motion.
Thank you. Ed, may I have a second? That's Josh?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. Is there any discussion or any questions?
I have a question. It's a part-time, temporary laborer. Is $50 an hour the going rate?
Well, this is what I wanted to bring up. I think we have to kick this back to our highway superintendent because I think that there are provisions in our collective bargaining agreement that I, I think we can only pay 50% more than the going rate. So that was going to be my comment, that I wasn't sure that this was allowed within our collective bargaining agreement.
Makes sense.
I would, since we don't have another town, oh, we have one tomorrow. So I'll call Bob and, and get this on the, what if we don't have one tomorrow? What if it's canceled?
Is, is, is this immediate?
I don't know.
He started working, hasn't he?
No, he started working as a mason. Let's, give me a second to read the resolution again and see if we can amend it with some room here.
We could amend it to say it, at $50.
That the town board authorize, may I finish, authorizes the hire of a temporary laborer.
It's 80 hours. I think it's actually defined.
It doesn't matter. It's the hourly rate we're talking about. A temporary laborer at the maximum rate allowed by the collective bargaining agreement, the maximum hourly rate.
Or $50, whichever is lower.
So we're amending this to say resolve that the town board authorizes the hire of a temporary laborer at the maximum hourly rate allowed by the collective bargaining agreement or $50 an hour, whichever is lower.
You want to add the not to exceed 80 hours clause?
Well, I'm only amending.
That's already in there.
I, um, yes, I'm only.
I see. You're amending one of the whereas clauses.
No, I'm, I'm amending the resolve to say that the town board authorizes the hire of a temporary relate laborer at the maximum hourly rate allowed by the collective bargaining agreement or $50 an hour, whichever is lower, not to exceed 80 hours between November 4th and December 31st. And I am going to leave his name in there to hire Jamie Link at the, because this may be not for H M E O, or this may be for, this may be outside the collective, collective bargaining agreement. So I do want to, I know that Jamie has been doing mason, mason work for us. He, he just finished the renovation. Well, let's, let's get this on the table. Do, I amended the resolution. May I have a motion for the amendment? Thank you. May I have a second for the amendment? All in favor of the amendment? I passes unanimously. I'll just say that he has been doing masonry work for the town. He just finished Miller Bridge in less time and a fraction of the money that was quoted to us by other masonry contracts. He's a very skilled mason. He just, he just fixed the town hall steps this weekend. So this may be outside the collective bargaining agreement. In which case, I think we need to amend this further to say.
Second amendment?
If it's outside the collective bargaining agreement, I still think recovered because if he's not a collect, if it's not a collective bargaining rate, we can hire him for $50. Or should we make this, sorry, more tighter?
I think we, we. The rate needs to be confirmed.
I think we have to give this one more stab because I think this might be outside the scope of the collective bargaining agreement. That's why I'm, because you.
You could just add another clause that says, or the positions outside the scope of the bargaining agreement, then it's $50.
Thank you. Just writing it down. May I have a, a second to Alan's motion for the second revision?
Second.
Thank you, Josh. Okay, all in favor of the motion on the table? I passes unanimously and I'll clarify it with Bob. I'm just making a note.
I think we just voted on the amendment. Now we've got to vote on the motion.
Yeah.
There's an open motion on the table that was a motion by Ed and seconded by Josh. All in favor? By any opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you. I'll make a motion for resolution 2021 to 35, amending the cell phone policy reimbursement. May I have a second? Thanks. We are lowering the amount of personal cell phone reimbursements because we're only paying what the town pays on a contract. And that number's going down. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor? By any opposed, passes unanimously. May I have a motion for resolution 1236 to accept, acceptance of street tree removal from Dave's tree service?
Motion.
Thank you, Chauncey. I'll make a second. And I just want to say that Dave's tree service is doing this gratis in appreciation for what he sees as very excellent service from the town in getting his zoning and building permits and in support of us. And I think that's very generous. He's been very generous to us. So thank you, Dave, and Dave's tree service.
Elizabeth, was this run by maintenance? Because I didn't know anything about this at all.
I don't know.
No, I think there was the, there was talk of this two meetings ago or one meeting ago where.
Yes, we brought this up. You were, did you miss a meeting recently, Ed? We had a schematic and a proposal from the village board and Meg that, yes, we voted on this. Thanks, Josh. Was that the last meeting? Any further questions? Ed, Ed, we have two dead trees that need to come down. And that's according to Meg and Dick. All in favor? Any opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you. I need a motion for resolution 2021 to 37 to cancel the town board meeting of December 27, 2021.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Ed. May I have a second? Thank you. This is because there's just not enough time between the two holidays for a clerk's office to do this. And we can survive two and a half weeks until the next meeting. Any further discussion or comments or questions? Josh?
No, I'm sorry. I was voting.
All in favor?
I'm excited, so.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you. I would like to make a motion for resolution 2021 to 38 for support of the Hudson Seven Drinking Water Council to hire a coordinator. May I have a second? Thank you, Chauncey. I would like to make an amendment to the motion in front of us. It is the one, two, three, four, fifth, whereas, I would like to amend that to say whereas each member of the Hudson Seven is contributing annually to fund the position and may I have a second on the motion to amend? Thank you. All in favor of amending the motion?
Aye.
By any against? The amendment passes unanimously. The reasons it's changed is because the two city, the city of Poughkeepsie, the town of Poughkeepsie and the town of Hyde Park are contributing $5,000. The smaller towns like us and the village of Rhinebeck and Lloyd and Port Ueno are paying 2,500 a year towards this. The bulk of the funding is coming from the county of Duchess and the county of Ulster. And the details are to be worked out by our attorney. We'll be writing the IMA for the seven municipalities, for the nine municipalities. And we are going to be reimbursed for all of our costs in writing the IMA. Is there any further discussion or questions? Alan, was that a premature question?
What is it with these guys?
It, like, everybody's rushing to get to an executive session or something. I don't know. All in favor?
Aye.
By any opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you. I need a motion for resolution 2021 to 39 for the natural burial ground land survey.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Ed. May I have a second? Thanks, Alan. Is there any discussion or any?
I have a, both a question and a comment. Question first, where is the natural burial, burial ground? I look at the survey and.
So you go down Mill Road and.
I mean, on the survey.
Oh, I'm, uh, well, it's, 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 it's right there. It's marked out.
Well, I see various boundaries, but is it the crosshatch, the speckled or the white?
The little, the little squares are the plots for the burial ground.
In other words, the, I would call it a crosshatch. That's the natural burial ground?
Hold on. You see this? This is, this is the natural burial. Please, one at a time. This is the set back. And that's the little road that goes in there with the gate. I guess it's crosshatching? Yes.
Shows the sites. Whatever it is, not really crosshatching. It's a checkerboard, I guess.
I think those are the plots.
Yes. Okay. The, the comment and our surveyor will presumably attend to this, but while I was practicing law, I had any number of instances in which it was very difficult to locate a boundary because a marker had disappeared. It was so deteriorated. Whatever the problem is, we just want to be sure we get markers that will last essentially forever.
I think.
And we'll be able to find them.
I think that's a challenge. And that's why I like to, you know, work with the cemetery committee and Gary, you know, Gary will be retiring. Yeah, I agree. It's, it's a, it's a big job. Any further comment or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you. I need a motion for resolution 2021 to 40 to approve the 2022 highway department material bids.
Make a motion.
Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you, Alan. Any discussion, any comments?
I have a question. Are the no bid items, no bid items, because we have enough material in inventory or is there some other?
They're off state or county with county bids. We don't, we don't need a bid for them. They're off state. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We go off state or county contract. Is that your understanding, Joe? Who's the liaison? That, is that your understanding?
That is, yeah.
Thank you.
It's a pastor.
Well, the state and the county have done the work and going to bid for us and we piggyback on their bids. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? So, so moved. I need a motion for resolution 2021 to 41 to replace windows in the furnace room. Thank you, Chauncey. Have a second? Thank you, Alan. Is there any discussion or any question?
Yeah, I have a question. This is also in the purview of maintenance. Was this on the last meeting too that I missed? Must.
I don't know. This was brought forward by Shelley and Joan. I think that they did the bid with Hobson's. They're on a, they're on a, a hot tear to get things fit, finish this here for us. I think they worked with Bobby on it.
They're better than us.
That they know what they're doing. Any?
An error to point out. It's the furnace room, but the estimate in the description of the location refers to the courtroom. Just want to be sure they know where they're going to be working.
Joni, are you there? Can you hear this?
Read the estimate that came into Shelley. I'm sure that it's just an error and we'll ask them to correct it.
Well, wait, wait. There were two things that went out to bid. One was replacing the window that we never replaced in the big room and the other were the windows downstairs. So there is a discrepancy here.
That is correct.
I would like to amend this motion to reflect the bid or we can table it until our next meeting.
I mean, no, the basic intent is windows below ground, right?
No, one window is in the big room that's above the doorway. But we never got that repaired when we did all the window replier. And the other bid was for the two windows in the downstairs. So. And the other bid was for the uh two uh windows in the downstairs. So.
This is obviously for the, for the big room, not the downstairs room.
Just the one window.
Well, I mean.
Right?
I don't know.
Says the job location southeast side of auditorium slash courtroom.
That's the, I am right.
Actually where the door.
That's, that's outside.
I'm telling you that what windows have to be replaced, and there is a discrepancy, so I think we should table this. Joan, unless you have another suggestion?
I think you should table it, too.
Thank you. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
It'll give Steve Hopson some time, so that's good.
Um I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty one two forty two for preliminary accounts payable abstracts. May I have a second?
Three, twenty, two forty three.
No, it's twenty two forty two. Capital abstracts is, is uh two forty three.
Okay, fine. Um um the next jump's a twenty forty three.
Okay, they're out of order in.
They're out of order. Well, then I'm the jerk. No, you're right. It's out of order.
Um mine isn't. Like, maybe I have a, I don't know.
One on the, the one on the town website is out of order.
I picked up my packet in town hall today.
Oh.
Cause I was working there all day.
I didn't leave my house today.
I know those days. Anyway, back to I, I, oh, resolution twenty twenty one two forty two preliminary accounts payable abstracts. I need a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
You, Ed. Um a- any discussion other than the incorrect numbering?
Somebody's been drinking.
Not yet. Who? Joan's been there since eight in the morning. I know she hasn't been tippling. I was there until quarter of six.
Phone.
Of the resolution.
Nine, nine, six.
Somebody's drinking. I'm sorry.
Okay, for, I don't even think it's funny because the.
Alright, I'm sorry.
Cause the, 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 as you know, the town clerk's office has been under a lot of stress.
Well, I wasn't checking on.
Seven, nine, nine, six, four is the amount, correct?
Correct. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Uh item thirteen, resolution twenty twenty one two forty three for our capital projects abstract. I will make a motion. May I have a second?
Okay.
Thank you, Alan. Is there any discussion or any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Uh before we go on to any other items, I would like to uh make a motion to go into executive session to discuss the employment history and compensation of a particular individual. May I have a second?
Second.
Let me just.
Alan, can you get us?
We'll be back, everybody.
How long do you think you'll be?
About four hours.
Yeah, sure. Okay. How long do you really think you'll be?
Twenty five minutes. Fifteen to twenty minutes.
Absolutely.
Or maybe ten.
Not something I wanted here.
Uh do we need Joan to get us into the uh?
No, no, I don't get, Alan does that.
Oh, okay, okay.
No, but Jo- Joan, you can stay as the clerk, clerk, I mean.
She's good. She, she, she doesn't need the angst.
Let me ask, do you think that you're going to take action when you come out?
I think we are going to uh not take public action. I think we will have to speak to our labor attorney.
Alright, cause I mean, if it, I, I mean, I know Joe Gelb is still on, but I can, I'm more than happy. You don't think you're gonna take action when you come out? I'm more than happy to just um.
Bill, I'm telling you that the, I think the, the only action we may take is to direct our labor attorney. Does the town board agree with me?
Yes.
I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll, just give me a call if anything happens and um.
Do you need me to call you if anything doesn't happen?
Why don't you?
Bye, Bill.
Alright, thanks. Bye, I'm out.
Um I think we're missing Chauncey, but we have a quorum here, so um I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got it.
Third, fourth.
Thank you, everybody. Good night. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.